Good evening, welcome to our September Township Supervisor meeting. I'll call the meeting to work this time and I'll invite you to join the board by standing as we pledge the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. This time we'll have the roll call.
Jerry Long.
President.
Arthur Zerby.
Here.
David Leinbach.
Here.
Michael Reiner.
Elizabeth McGovern.
Chris Hartman.
Yeah, I am here in place of Elizabeth McGovern, thank you.
Carol Martin, yes.
Okay, before we normally go to a public comment session at this time, but last month we had a continual use hearing continued to this meeting. So I'm going to turn it over to our solicitor, Chris, tonight to explain how that process ended, what we were expecting and what we have to do tonight and what we need to do to go forward. So at this time.
Okay, thank you. Last month was the time that was advertised for a public hearing in the RJS Investments LLC conditional use zoning application. At the time of the hearing on August 14th, there was testimony received and at the conclusion of that testimony, there was a determination that the township still needed to receive from the applicant a water study. So the hearing was continued from August 14th until tonight, September 11th, for the purpose of keeping the record open so the township could receive that water study. It is now September 11th, the time that was appointed for the continuation of that hearing and the township has been notified by the representative of the applicant, Mr. Ron Hershey, that he and his clients still do not have the water study ready to submit to the township. Mr. Hershey, on behalf of the applicant, RJS Investments LLC, has offered to the township a further continuance of the hearing until the board's October 9th meeting. My recommendation to the board at this time would be to consider a motion to further continue the conditional use hearing until October 9th, 2018, at 7:00 PM. And if you make that motion and we announce it as we are doing here at tonight's meeting, it will not be necessary to continue or to re-advertise that hearing. We can continue to operate on the basis of the original advertisement. Before you make that motion though, I would like to have an exhibit entered into the record tonight. This exhibit has been marked by the stenographer as Exhibit 8 in the conditional use hearing and this exhibit is a copy of an email that Carol Martin received from Ron Hershey indicating the statement that I already made, which is that Mr. Hershey, on behalf of his client, the applicant, has offered to the township their approval of a continuance of the hearing until October 9th. So if it's agreeable to the board, we'll have that exhibit entered into the record. Is that agreeable to the board?
Yes, please.
Okay. And with that, I would urge the board to make a motion to continue this hearing further until October 9th at 7:00 PM.
Does the board have any objections or comments?
The only thing is if they don't get it done by then, will they get it done by then? Do we make a motion that it's a further meeting instead of October 9th?
Well, you're going to be meeting on October 9th in any case, so we can at that time discuss what the further step would be. So I would just, I would recommend we just continue until October 9th and then we'll see where we're at at that time.
Okay. I make a motion that we approve to move to the next township meeting, October 9th. Okay. Okay, the motion was made to forward the continued meeting tonight till next month on October 9th. It was second. Those in favor say aye. Aye, aye. Motion carries.
Okay. With that, I recommend to the board that we recess this hearing until October 9th and thank the stenographer for her service.
Thank you. Okay, I'll make a motion that we recess the continual use hearing scheduled for tonight and continue till next month. Is there, that's the motion, is there a second? A second. Motion was made in second, those in favor say aye. Aye, aye. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. At this time, we'll have our public comment session. We opened the floor up. Anyone who has comments they want to make. I set a timer for four minutes. If you need additional time, we may consider it, but we start out with a four-minute limit. Just state your name and we have someone right there. You're on.
I'm on board.
Yeah.
Just by way of information, I'm not arguing or anything. The development at the corner of Lauchtown Road and 625 took almost a year to get their water study done, primarily because that piece of land is quite populated with houses. There is no recharge. It's important for a house to have beyond like an acre or whatever, so that there's recharge. Whenever you stuff a piece of, a house or a building on a piece of property that's too small, there's no recharge or not sufficient recharge. And it could be that that's the problem with the Mr. Sellers. Like I said, it took almost a year for Mr. King, I guess it was, to obtain from somebody, from, Mike would be able to tell us more about that. And what he did was, for the water study, he drilled a well and he drilled it right in the wetlands there. He mean that he filled up with water. He said, "See, I have plenty of water." Well, that doesn't satisfy the condition that our ordinance sets forth. So that took, like I say, over a year for him to obtain an okay for the water study. And what it does is, all the land surrounding there now is providing him with water. And it actually, if somebody wanted to develop land like on the other side of the wetlands or somewhere in that general vicinity, they would be unable because that's part of that recharge. That's all I want to say.
Is anyone else that wants to make a statement?
Yes. Yes, my name is Jay Jorge. I have a question, also kind of deals with that development he was just talking about and the one on the other side of the road where they have the two retention ponds. It seems like that those retention ponds fill with water and the water stays in there. Is that the way they're supposed to work and that water being stagnant all the time, isn't that a breeding ground for the mosquitoes and so on and so forth?
To my knowledge, some have clay bottoms and are supposed to be drained more than that. And some have bottoms that are supposed to let it flow through. You'd have to go to the plan to see. Some of them are supposed to be wet bottomed and some of them.
I could provide some answers to that if you wish. Yeah, that could be a long subject, so summarize it. Oh, yeah.
Well, my question, Roy, is if, since it doesn't, water doesn't flow through it and it's a, just a hole, isn't that more of a breeding ground for the mosquito population and things like that? Is that?
Well, in regards to those two basins, they're both in their temporary status, meaning that it retains water so that any additional water comes in, it's retained so the sediment settles out. So once they get converted to their permanent status, then it'll drain more quickly, but they have, they're designed to hold water in their temporary status.
How long do they stay in a temporary status?
Until it gets dedicated.
Okay.
To the township.
Okay. You're saying there's probably filters in there now to keep this sediment from holding water and it's just a process.
The bottom hole on the sediment basin is blocked off and so the discharge hole is up further else, even there's a skimmer that draws the water from the top. And the one in Maple Ridge North is questionable at times whether or not it's working and we've seen reports by the county conservation district that they need to, you know, remedy it.
They inspect that regularly.
Yeah, the county inspects those.
So they are under, okay.
Yeah. It's a regulated basin, really.
Now, I'll get back to Mel. I appreciate your concern. You were one that shared a lot on behalf of the community when Jake King went through that.
Yeah.
And we're aware of that. I think the issue right now is they did the wells, but they didn't do the drawdown tests to determine how much recharge will be on that property. I don't think they're getting any results or bad results or I don't think they're trying to hide anything. They just were late in getting the process started and, you know, I think, you know, our final decision will be based upon the recharge rate of the wells when they test them. So we'll keep your concern in mind and try to address that. Do I add anything today, Mel?
Just one thing about that development, Mel, Ron, is years ago, Mr. King came to me about that wetland piece and I guess if it goes the way it's going right now, it'll be in a homeowners agreement thing where to save it, he's willing, he's willing to give it to the township. We own the piece across the street, we have 11 acres and we've got to protect that place. We don't need some children out of that development getting four-wheelers. Mom and pop get them four-wheelers, they have no place to run them and you make trails all through that thing. You know, it's time somebody ought to talk to Mr. King.
Well, the one, the one across the road holds water too, is that?
Yeah.
Okay.
And that's still in its temporary status.
Okay, okay.
That, there's, I mean, the representative of the owner reached out to the township and I think, I imagine also reached out to Mike Reiner in regards to what's required to, yeah, at this point, to bring it to point of dedication.
Okay, this time we'll move on to the minutes. You have the minutes from July 10th in your packet to approve because they were not in our packet last month and then you have the minutes of August 14th to approve. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes of July 10th? See, and they have none. Is there a motion to approve them?
I make the motion that we approve the minutes of July 10th and recess.
Do we have a second?
I have a second.
Okay, the motion is to approve the minutes of July 10th as they're listed and was second. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye. Motion carries. Now, are there any corrections or additions in that as you have for August? If not, is there a motion to approve them?
I make a motion to approve the minutes as presented from August 14th meeting.
A second. Okay, we had a motion to approve the August 14 minutes and it was second. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Okay, you have the list of the bills from the general fund, light fund and state fund for September, a total of $176,570 and seven cents. Are there any questions or comments, concerns?
I have one.
Okay.
And I only, Carol, would know. True, we.
Yeah, just to clean the, cleaning, to kill the weeds in the fencing areas in the park and some of the guide rails.
I mean, I, you know me.
Well, we, we were looking at possibly getting one of our road crew certified to do that, but that just didn't happen.
So I'm against spraying all this stuff. That's always.
There's only certain areas, not all of them.
I know.
Yeah.
There was another township, you know, while back they got in a lot of trouble, they were spraying along the road, too close to a stream, oh, they got in trouble.
Now, what about that vinegar spray that's, you can use vinegar and something that's supposed to be.
They use pure vinegar up at the park underneath, like there are some places at the park, well, other areas.
What happened was, they sprayed years ago and I came on the road crew and one of the things that happened is when you spray those weeds is the insects get to it, then the birds eat the insects and it's second-class poisoning. There was very few barn swallowes when I first started doing it. Boy, in just a couple of years, without this spraying, you should have seen it. There'd be 30, 40 barn swallowes following right around my head for all the bugs ever born up near. But I am not a big fan of spraying. It kills a lot of wildlife and I just wanted to raise my opinion.
I don't think he does.
What's that?
He doesn't do all of them.
No.
I just think it's like hard to see areas and that sort of thing.
Okay. Are there any other questions or comments on the bills? Is there a motion to approve the bills as listed?
I'll make a motion to approve the bills as listed in the amount of $176,570 and seven cents.
I have a second.
Okay, we had a motion to approve the bills of September and it was second. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Okay, you have the roadmaster's report and he's probably out checking high water right now.
I'm on.
Okay.
Please, I'm on.
Are there any comments the board wants to make regarding the roadmaster's report?
I do have a comment.
Yep.
It should be more totally aimed, yeah, we had the thing about hiring more help. Last time I went through that, there were people that applied and we did interviews with them that didn't meet all the requirements in line with a CDL. I think it would be most important that, that we would look to hire somebody that at least meets the requirements or they have full applications.
I agree and that should be passed on to him.
And I'd like to make.
Yeah.
Devotes the records. All of our road crew personnel should have a CDL license to start off the first of the year.
Please note that, yes, that all? Is valley protein spilling? Is this a lot or how, how should we respond and give Andy directions?
They've been doing this for many, many years.
Is it a bad, is it a bad smell?
Oh, yeah. Ask Levi, he was out there. Yeah, and Dave could tell you too.
The last time, it was, it was not a big spill, but it was bad. I'm really glad I was living there. It was all under nuisance, violation of our ordinance, nuisance.
I don't, I haven't looked at your specific ordinance, I wasn't aware, I have a specific ordinance on nuisances, but there is a provision in the second-class township code that makes it a summary offense to create a nuisance on a public road. And so you could take action either under your ordinance if it, you know, I would have to review it to understand how it applies, but I can tell you that from what I'm reading in the roadmaster's report, it would be possible to take action and this is under section 2326 of the second-class township code regarding nuisances on a public road.
Would you send them a warning letter saying that it's been come to this board's attention and we desire to have this ceased and if it continues, we will be pursuing legal action to remedy it?
Second-class township code, 2326.
Correct, 2326.
You can follow that more here.
I want to make one comment.
Go ahead.
So Levi can hear it. I remember Jim Brubaker. When he'd smell that smell, he'd go, "Mmm, smells just like ham and beans." "Oh, no," he'd say that every time. Oh, Jim.
I think he was trying to convince himself. Okay, Andy requested, looking at a welder, is there any objections from this board to, for him to purchase a new welder? Understand the one he has is on its last leg. We did budget.
Fifty dollars.
Oh, it's a good point. We did budget for a new welder, so it'd just be at this time, if the board has no objections, we would probably say, shall proceed. Any objections?
I think it's a good idea, they need a welder.
Okay.
He did, we had earlier.
In fact, last year, he, Christ, this has not been an impulsive decision, it's been known as then for over a year now.
It didn't, I don't know.
Okay. Nothing else on the roadmaster's, oh, go ahead.
That pipe thing, yeah, they reported pipes.
Yeah, that seemed to be kind of complicated to address tonight. But make your, go ahead.
Well, I was just wondering, did Andy say something about the private property owners' huge responsibility or?
He's asking that, is this a burden we want to put on homeowners or a burden we want to put on the township?
Yeah.
Well, if they're on private property, they should be, private property is responsibility.
Unless it's dedicated to the township, they are private, they are the responsibility of the property owner, unless there's something, you know, if it's in a subdivision and there's a homeowners association that took responsibility or if it's in the plan, the developer took responsibility, I mean, it could, you have to investigate the particular pipe and see if there's any documentation about it, but in the absence of any documentation that assigns the responsibility to somebody else, it is on the property owner where the pipe is located.
I think the position this board took when the gentleman along Maple Grove Road complained about the snow coming on this board to help the township, that if you do, his board, we felt like we should not be taking, you know, taking taxpayers' money from sun to pay for other people's.
He came to see me last week.
I regret bringing it up.
And then his daughter went to Harrisburg to Pendott. Pendott told him that we have the contract, we're the ones that are responsible. So there's where we stand.
Okay. Does that answer your question?
Yeah.
There's one thing though I want you to keep in mind as you think about that pipe business in the future. Maple Grove Road going into Chestnut Street, as you look down to the left, the big catch basin dying, toward the turnpike, that big catch basin. Years ago, when that pipe and that whole head wall and everything collapsed and went to nothing, we, it says on the plans the homeowner was responsible, but we have an easement. Now, all of that water comes out of half of that development anyway and into there. We went in and we fixed that head wall and that pipe because if we would have had to rely on Mr. Holmes to do it, I don't think it would have got done and all that water would have packed up through that development. So you're going to have to take each case and look at it to see, should the township assist?
Okay, that's it for the roadmaster's report. We'll move on to the engineer's report and Mike is not here tonight, but one page full of the reports. So under this section, we list the items required on board action for approval. In his absence, I'll read those. Clara Hoover, Stormwater Management, so the maintenance, issued financial security release recommendation, August 24th, in the amount of $2,200. Item number two, the Stephen Smucker, Stormwater Management, issued financial security release recommendation dated August 22nd, with the amount of $2,700. Item number three, Pushed Out Blue Power Equipment Plan Development, received direct memorandum of understanding, the board to accept. Item number four, Randy Z. Martin, Stormwater Management, received memorandum of understanding and stormwater management agreement for action by the board, issued a financial security recommendation letter dated August 21st, with the amount of $2,750. Number five, Joseph Good, Stormwater Management, issued financial security release recommendation dated September 7th, with the amount of $2,727.27. Item number six, the Franklin Karen Hershaw, Stormwater Management, issued financial security release recommendation dated September 7th for $1,792. And the last one, item number seven, James Hubert, Stormwater Management, issued financial security release recommendation dated September 7th, with the amount of $2,828.26. Is there any comments or questions that we either can try to answer or pass back to our township engineer? Are we good with approving the, the action requested by the township engineer? If we are, I'll make a motion that we approve all the items that the township engineer has listed, one through seven, for board action. And is there a second?
I have a second.
Okay, the motion is made in second to approve. Items, seven items as listed in your packet for action by the board, it was second. Those in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries. Okay, you have a copy of the, the SEO's report. You have a copy of Technicon's Building Code Enforcement Report. You have a copy of the Township Zoning Officer's Report for August. Do you have any questions for the zoning officer in regards to? Do you have any questions for the zoning officer in regards to his report? Does the zoning officer have any comments he wants to add that is not on this report?
Nope.
Thank you. Okay, do we have anything from the solicitor now?
Everything is on agenda that we want to bring.
Okay, thank you. Is there a motion to approve the reports?
I'll make a motion that we approve the Roadmaster Engineer/SEO zoning and after the solicitor, item as reported.
I second it. Okay, we had a motion to approve the reports. It was second, does it favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Okay, you have the minutes from the Park and Rec Commission meeting. And I think they either did not have a meeting one month, but...
They had them, they're just out of the way.
Does the board have any comments to add to their minutes?
This young fellow who's doing, I guess it's the Scott Project, right? Did we ever meet him yet?
Yeah.
It'd be nice if he came in and gave us a follow-up of what he's planning on doing, and so we know what's going on over there.
Levi, as representation of the board to the Park and Rec meeting, will you follow up with that? Okay. Now, we have a lease agreement for Pathways, what is the official name? Pathways Community Homeschooling, Inc., for agreement at lease. It says here. We've seen this for a couple of times, and I guess, have they... Have they presented or signed copies? Do we need a motion of the board to...
They have not, but they have seen it and are okay with the agreement, yeah.
Do we need a motion from the board to...
Yes, yes, to sign the agreement, yes.
I'll make a motion that we, that the board would go ahead and sign the lease agreement with Pathways on the terms that's listed. Is there a second?
I have a second.
Okay, the motion is made, the second, does it favor? Say aye.
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 Motion carries. Okay, that concludes the new business. No, that concludes the Park and Rec business. On to new business, we have a request by the Five Pointville Ambulance to be able to provide emergency medical stand at the annual WIV Fall Fest. We haven't represented it here tonight, so anything you'd like to share with the board?
I'm Dave Fisher, I'm president of the annuals. There's letters from the chief, I just read that. He said to me also, he can't be here, he asked if I'd come.
Okay.
WIV called me a couple of weeks ago and asked if we would be interested in providing EMS services for their concert.
Fall Fest, I'm like...
The Fall Fest. Yeah. So it's something for us. They go after volunteer organizations to do that. And it would be a great experience for all the volunteers. And all the volunteers worked very, very hard throughout the year. Training, covering, time long call, going to the community events to do the fresh fight stands that we do. It's something really good for them to get their due for change. Something different we've never done. And before we get down there, did you hear on the radio that Five Pointville Ambulance is providing emergency first aid service? We wanted to ask permission because you do graciously provide us with our work that's covered for volunteers, so no surprises.
Any questions for Dave?
I will add that Dave Pye said that there would be another ambulance in service in the township. They're not taking it away yet.
We have two ambulances, and one would be here fully covered. And the rest I don't put down there anymore. But you won't notice something wrong there.
Okay, well, I'll make a motion that we grant permission to the Five Pointville Ambulance to represent the township and attend the WIV Fall Fest.
A second.
Okay, motion is made, and second? Does it favor? Say aye. Aye. Motion carries. Since you're here tonight, Dave, on behalf of the board supervisors and the local residents, we'd like to present you with our annual contribution check of $15,000 payable to the Five Pointville Ambulance Association. So awesome. Maybe if you'd come a little more often.
Not like you're not busy or anything, right, Dave?
Thank you for what you do. Okay, does the board have any other items? If not, is there a motion to adjourn?
I'm making a motion to adjourn according to the clock on the wall there at 7:35.
As long as I can. Okay, the motion is made to adjourn, and a second? Does it favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.